Regular session for Monday, August 7th, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you, if you will, please let us stand together as our county attorney will lead us in prayer. Then I ask you to please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
Heavenly Father, Maker of Heaven and Earth, Redeemer, Generous Provider, we are desperately dependent upon you for all things. Bestow your wisdom to this body and its members to know and do your will for our county, to abandon unrighteous agendas, to hear and heed your voice, and to make decisions according to your holy word, so that we may practice kindness, develop unity, and walk humbly before you. Bring about unity in our nation and our county through the power of the Holy Spirit. May we, in reverence through repentance of our sins, return to you. As a soul must said, "The sacrifices of God or a broken spirit are broken in a contrite heart, O God, you will not despise." Father, open up heaven's windows to bless this nation and county as we humble ourselves before you. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you here to Commissioners Meeting, which is your meeting to those that may be viewing online. We also welcome you. I would ask for those in attendance, if you would, please let's make sure our cellphones are on silent so they wouldn't disrupt this meeting. We would appreciate it. We do have a long agenda tonight. Commissioners, we will take a break, probably if we between items eight and nine, if it's all right with the Commissioners. After we hear from Mr. Booth, our Water Superintendent, we'll take a recess, short recess, and then come back and finish up the meeting. Commissioners, you have before you Agenda packets this evening. Are there any items that you desire to pull or add to tonight's agenda? Here none, do I have a motion that we approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed. Item one is the Carts Public Hearing. I'm going to ask if Ms. Kelly Walker-Cuthbert will come, give us an introduction tonight and what our public hearing is about, and then we'll call for a vote. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. As a direct recipient of federal Transit Administration funds, Carts is required to update the Title VI Program Plan every three years. This process requires receiving input from the public via a public hearing. The draft plan has been available on the Carts website and at the Carts office since July 28th. The changes to the plan include correction of the wording to only specify race, color, and national origin because Title VI is specific to the protection against discrimination based on any of those factors. This changes per FTA guidance. Sex, age, and religion are not part of Title VI. The sentence "Carts" is also committed to follow Craven County's nondiscrimination policy or policies to ensure no one based on sex, age, religion, or disability will be subject to discrimination was added to show that we are committed to preventing discrimination based on those factors as well. The other changes were just data chart updates to reflect the most current data that's available.
All right, before we go into public hearing, does any of the Commissioners have any questions? Ms. Kelly? Here none, do I have a motion that we would go into public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, all right, Mr. Vice Chair?
There's no one signed up to speak at the public hearing.
Okay. Are there any citizens in attendance that did not have the opportunity to sign up for this public hearing that desire to speak to the Board? All right, here no one, do I have a motion that we go out of public hearing? I move. All right, Commissioner Smith makes a motion, a second from Commissioner Hunt. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed. We're back to the Board, any questions? Hunt, thank you, Ms. Kelly, appreciate it. Item two is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Tonight, fellow citizens, we do have an opportunity at the end of the meeting, which are petition of citizens for general topics. This is for agenda topics. We ask that each speaker, if you come forward, please state your name and address, and there's three minutes to make remarks. Mr. Vice Chair?
No one signed up for the agenda topics.
Okay, anyone in attendance that desires to speak, did not sign up for agenda topics. All right, seeing no one, we will move to item three. You have before you the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, you have the minutes of the July 17th, 2023 regular session, tax releases and refunds, the ABC Board travel policy, elections, which is a donation of voting booths, economic development, the authorization of signature for withdrawal of the rail easement. The sheriff has two items here, a donation rollover, a budget amendment, and a donation of checks, budget amendment. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull? Here none, what's the desire of the Board?
I move that we accept consent agendas. Does that mean?
Okay, we have a motion to accept consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second, is any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
No.
All right, item four, you have the Community Child Protection Team Annual Report. We're honored this evening to have Ms. Jeanne Cook, and she can introduce those in attendance with her. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you for having us. My name is Jeanne Cook. I am the chair of the Craven County Community Protection Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Team.
I'm Antoinette Bosky, and I co-chair those teams with Ms. Jeanne Cook.
Welcome.
Next slide, please. As you can see, our local CCPT and CFPT team is a blended team, which consists of community providers to include public and non-public agencies. There are 16 listed mandated members, and the Board appoints additional members. Next slide, please. The purpose of the North Carolina Community Child Protection Team and Community Child Community Fatality Protection Team is to develop a community-wide approach to child abuse and neglect, understand causes of childhood deaths, identify gaps, deficiencies in service delivery, make and implement recommendations for laws, rules, policies to prevent further child abuse, neglect, and death. Part of our recommendation throughout our team meetings was to develop a QR code to help, to provide information and education on services provided to our Craven County citizens and providers. And so this code was created, funded by Craven County DSS. The good thing about this QR code, it can be edited and added additional providers and information as we get knowledge of those, so we can add these. I actually brought some to leave with the Commissioners, and so it'd be great if you could provide these out to the community, and they can open their cellphones, scan it, a little code to pop up, and it has topics and areas such as cover safe sleep, Board of Education, the schools, and other providers and stuff. And just so you know, this was developed in February, and it's been scanned almost 300 times, so people are using it. Next slide, please. In 2022, Craven County Department of Social Services received 1,344 reports of abuse, neglect, and/or dependency. Of those 1,344 reports, 844, 63% of those met the criteria to be screened in. You can see the increase from 2018 to 2022, the number continues to rise as the reports received. There was a decrease in the reports accepted, but again, the reports received is almost over 200 more in the last five years. Antoinette?
So, if you can go to the next slide for me. Our CFPT members review cases on a quarterly basis. We meet January, April, July, and October. We review records of deceased residents under the age of 18. We discuss the outcomes to services, circumstances surrounding the child's death, and search for ways to prevent future fatalities. When you go to the next slide, it'll talk about those fatalities. Next slide, please. But what I want to note before we talk about those fatalities is that none of these fatalities were a result of abuse or neglect. So I think that's important to know. Of those fatalities, 10 were perinatal conditions, three were due to birth defects, and one was due to co-sleeping. Of those outcomes, we propose the action that the Health Department provide education through their prenatal clinic, that Carolina East Hospital provide prenatal education during hospital visits, and then, of course, we have the QR code, which by the number of times it's been clicked, we know that people are accessing it. Within that, when they go to these resources for that QR code, they'll also find information about safe sleep. That has been something that has definitely been an identified need by the team, the team that, as Ms. Cook mentioned, is not only public agencies, but it also includes those private agencies and representation from the community, which gives us a much more well-rounded view of what's happening from different perspectives. Next slide, please. Of the eight cases reviewed in 2022, the concerns identified, seven out of eight of the cases were dealing with children's mental health, three of the eight were the parents' mental health, three out of eight dealt with the children's substance use issues, two out of the eight dealt with the parent's substance abuse issues, one of the eight was due to the child's physical health, and two of the eight were because of parenting needs. Through that assessment, we identified our gaps. Next slide, please, I keep forgetting to say that, I'm sorry. We identified gaps being providers who provide substance abuse treatment to teens. There's been a definite increase in smoking, vaping, and drinking, and so we've got to fill that gap somehow. We also have limited placements for children in foster care due to their behaviors and needing a higher level of care. Next slide, please. So with that, we had the recommendations from the team to follow it with Trillium for substance abuse treatment for teens, partner with DJJ, and discussing court involvement with children who have aggressive behaviors, nutrition counseling to help with the understanding of the importance of healthy food choices, partnering with the school system to identify school activities to give children something to look forward to, referrals to parenting classes to educate parents on substance abuse and the impact, the impactability to parent children safely, continue to partner with Trillium to identify and locate therapeutic placements to meet the mental health needs of children in foster care. I would say this is a really important one. We tend to have children, the Department of Social Services have children, sometimes it's recommended for them to have a higher therapeutic care, and they're not accepted into some of these placements. So these children sometime wind up at the Hope Fund and Resource Center spending the night, sometimes these children wind up in respite providers, costing thousands of dollars to the county, it's county funds, and these children are not getting services while they're in these respite placements. So it's really important to partner and to try to get these providers to be able to provide to these families, so getting them licensed and being able to meet these children's needs. I also like to say, when it comes to safe sleep, as Antoinette said, it is a community issue. We really need to use those teachable moments to teach, if you see a parent who does not have a crib or a pack-and-play, the hospital, the Family Resource Center, the Epic Center, they provide those pack-and-plays. So anytime we can provide those to prevent a fatality, just reach out to one of those providers, or, you know, right there to Craven County DS, myself, Antoinette, and we can link you to those providers. Next slide, please. So the areas of focus for 2023 was to submit appropriate referrals to community partners to prevent future maltreatment, provide families and community partners with QR sheets to help educate, provide families with resources in Craven County, and to complete a survey with families to identify gaps in services and needs of families in the Craven County community. We are in the process of developing that survey, so if you receive it, or if you hear of somebody who's receiving it, really encourage them to fill that out and send it back because we are, again, looking for the ways to fill these gaps and way to get providers in here to meet these needs of these families that we serve. Next slide. We really want to say thank you for the opportunity presenting our information. Any questions?
Commissioners, you have any questions? Commissioner Mitchell?
Several slides back, you had of the, talking about the eight cases that were investigated.
Yes.
Two mental health, three substance abuse. With it, for those situations where there was substance abuse, neglect, physical, mental issues, were those identified, or could they have been identified before that tragedy? Were they identified in retrospect or in advance?
So these were our in-home cases or our cases involved with DSS for these cases. So they receive services through the county. Sometimes we have those repeat maltreatment cases where there might have been a case where we're working with the family and/or, you know, we just couldn't gather enough information to make a decision, so we continue to work with them, either through like family support cases and things like that.
So you are actively working the case as soon as the issue is identified?
Yes, these cases are open when we are reviewing them, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I'd just like to add the QR codes, an excellent idea. I know that's my first go-to whenever I want to learn about something, so that was a good decision to make.
Thank you, and I'll leave these here.
We're going to give them to the afternoon.
If you don't mind, just give them over there to Ms. Nan, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you both for your service, thank you for your presentation this evening. All right, departmental matters, on the item five, we have Carts, Ms. Kelly Walker-Cuthbert. She has two items to bring before the Board this evening. Good evening.
Good evening again. Our first item is requesting approval of the Title VI Nondiscrimination Program Plan that we discussed earlier and had the public hearing on.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Kelly? Here no questions, what's the desire of the Board?
Move that we approve. Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Carts Title VI Nondiscrimination Plan. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed, all right, and then B.
Okay, thank you. B is requesting a budget amendment. We were budgeted to purchase 26 two-way radios in fiscal year 23. The vendor was unable to provide delivery of the radios before the end of the fiscal year, which was June 30th. Carts is requesting a budget amendment in the amount of $36,674 to cover the cost of radios ordered in fiscal year 23, which will be delivered in fiscal year 24.
All right, any questions from the Board? Here none, what's the desire?
I move that we approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $36,674 for the purchase of 26 two-way radios that were ordered in fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, next we have emergency services, we have Mr. Stanley Kike here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here before you tonight. I would like to present to you some of our recipients of the North Carolina Department of Insurance grants for fire and rescue equipment this year, and I would really like to give them just an opportunity to step up personally and tell you they're here to request your assistance in helping them match these grants, which we've done in previous years, kind of to encourage them to go out and solicit the grants and work for them, and in some cases try to be eligible to try to save as much money as they can on some equipment that's necessary for the procedure for firefighting. So first, I'd like to present to you the Chief of Little Swift Creek. He was awarded $30,000 from North Carolina Department of Insurance. Chief?
Good evening.
The items we'll be getting on the grant this year is getting five sets of turnout gear Prices on those for one, one turnout gear coat is $1,600, one turnout gear pants is $1,200, one pair of boots $319, and one helmet for $352.
What's the total of those? Is that handy?
I don't, I don't have it added up.
Okay, that's close to 4,000, all right.
And then for four, the four air packs apiece are $8,370 and 70 cents, and then for eight bottles apiece, they are $965.
Okay, any questions on that one? All right, let me first say thank you for your service. Please relay that to your department, and we thank you for what you do.
I sure will, and we thank y'all for y'all's support. We really rely on these grants to be able to get the necessary equipment that it takes to do our job, so thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Next, I'd like to present Chief Milligan with Fort Barnwell.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Members of the Board, thank y'all for y'all's support historically in the past. As you have presented in front of you, our equipment that we have solicited for the grant this year are two chainsaws, six spare bottles, air pack bottles, three, excuse me, two portable generators, four scene lights, two complete air packs, four sets of turnout gear, three sets of gear coats, 10 sets of gloves, three pants, and a, what we call a cordless tool set for forcible entry. Total on all of that was right around $64,000. And do y'all have any questions?
Questions from the Board?
Thank you.
Again, Chief, thank you for what you're doing. You are the head president of our association here in Craven County. You got anything to share from?
I would, I would like to thank y'all, Jack, County Managers, Attorneys, and all of y'all for your support on the public safety training facility, as well as the support with the Sheriff's Office of Collaborative Effort between fire, EMS, and law enforcement. At this time, we still have not heard anything from the State, from the Senate, but hopefully some money will be turned loose to us. And again, we appreciate your support with the land and the transfer and getting that ball rolling. I think when I look back at the deed, when I signed the deed, we have held it for almost 20 years to the date, when I signed it. But a big help with Sheriff Hughes and his help as well on the political side, but look forward to it coming, but thank y'all again.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have the Township Nine Volunteer Fire Department. Received the grant for $29,855 in grant funds. Chief Smith?
Good evening. Good evening, Board. We really appreciate all the help y'all gave us over the past few years. We've applied for and got awarded seven gear bags, three rip packs, regulators, 10 execution gloves, four mobile radios, dual-band radio so we can talk both Viper and VHF, a thermal imaging camera, turnout gear, two sets, coat, pants, got five turnout gear gloves, five helmets, and five hoods, and then we got awarded six pagers for communications and one Gen 5 pager. Really appreciate y'all helping us in the past.
All right, any questions from the Board?
I'm sorry, how many radios are you giving away?
We're getting four mobile radios for the trucks.
Thank you again, please, again, Chief, relay to your department, I appreciate you.
Dover Volunteer Fire Department was recipient for $29,975 from grant funds.
We figured it out. Good evening, guys, thank you, I appreciate what you guys do, sitting in front of us and helping us out in the county. You guys got a hard job up here, and ours is easy sometimes, you guys have to answer all the questions. I'm the Fire Chief of Dover Fire Department, Bradley White. We've applied this year, fortunately, and got the Department of Insurance grant. Once again, we could not operate in Dover with the budget that we have without the grant from the State and help from you guys, not, we could not operate in the capacity that we do operate in. We applied for an accountability system, six pails of foam with no phosphorus, 10 encapsulators with no phosphorus, that's also a foam basic system, two nozzles, four SCBA's, four spare bottles, two chainsaws, and one set of turnout gear, which is coat and pants. Total of about $29,000 and some change on that, $29,975, and we, like I said, we always appreciate what you guys do.
All right, any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Next, I would like to introduce the President from Cove City, which I know y'all, if you remember, has been quite some time, and Cove City is eligible for grants now and have been successful in being awarded $29,396.
Good evening.
Good evening. Russ Caton, Assistant Chief, Cove City Fire Department. Just thank you guys again, like everybody else has said, for your continued support. Extremely hard to do what we do without funds. Unfortunately, everything has gone crazy in pricing, as I'm sure you guys know. We were eligible this year to get 10 complete sets of turnout gear from head to toe, and three portable dual-band radios. The total on all of that was $58,791, and just would greatly appreciate any assistance available.
All right, any questions? Russ, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
To your department, we appreciate them.
Miss Chairman, next, I'd like to introduce Chief of the Vesper Fire Department, Chief Lewis, they received $14,550.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, again, we thank you for your continued support for the local fire departments. List of equipment that we're receiving off our grant is five turnout gear bags, one dual-band portable, 10 sets of turnout gear boots, five sets of turnout gear pants and coats, 10 pair of gloves, five helmets, five pagers. Total grant was $29,100.
All right, any questions from Chief Lewis? Again, thank you in your department for what you do, sir.
That concludes the recipients, and at this time, I would like to ask the Commissioners to approve the budget amendment presented.
All right, is there any questions, comments from the Board? All right.
I just have a quick comment, and that is, you all said you appreciate what we do, but what we do doesn't, doesn't measure up to what you guys do as volunteers, to do what you do to keep our community safe. It's really appreciated by everybody sitting up here.
And I echo that, too. All right, here no questions, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, motion to approve $327,552 for budget amendment.
Okay, we have a motion for $327,552. I think that is a correction in what was listed, I think you made note of that. We have a second, from who? Somebody, okay, Commissioner Hunt, is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, item seven is, we have with us the Sheriff Chip Hughes and Major David McFadden. Before we consider seven A... Um, before we consider seven A, um, Commissioner Hunt serves on the Hope Mission Board and they will be a recipient of some of this grant funding that will be discussed in seven A. And so this evening, uh, her and I have talked about it, she understands, uh, she has asked the board to recuse her from discussion and on voting on this matter due to Senate Bill 473. I also looked up, uh, it's under North Carolina General Statute 14 dash 3, 234.3, 2021 dash 191. It's a lo-, local government transparency law. Yes. So, anyway, you've heard the request, do we have a motion to recuse her?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recuse Commissioner Hunt, is there any discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Somebody will come get you in a few minutes, Commissioner. All right, gentlemen, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I give this opportunity to speak to you this evening. Craven County Sheriff's Office has received a federal COSAP grant, uh, to provide services for inmates with substance abuse, uh, alcohol abuse in the Craven County Jail detention facility. Uh, it's a three-year grant, totals $970,737. It basically consists of three, uh, contracted services. Uh, one being, uh, a, the largest part being a co-, a contract with the Hope Recovery Homes in Carterick County. I'm sure many of you are familiar with it, I've appeared, uh, before, before you discuss this grant and also Hope Recovery Homes. Uh, under that grant, they will be providing nine beds, uh, per year for, to house Craven County inmates. As of today, we have 13 inmates, uh, at Hope Facility. Uh, you, the board has been gracious enough to provide another nine beds separately, so we're working towards that 18-bed goal. Uh, they will also provide under this contact, contract, three peer support specialists to work in the Craven County confinement facility with our inmate population in dealing with substance abuse issues. Also, uh, part of this grant will provide for, uh, a clinical assessment to be done in the facility by a licensed clinical, uh, assessment individual. We are fortunate enough to have contracted, contracted with a local individual who has worked in the Department of Corrections in other states and dealt with these same issues. She's very well experienced with, uh, substance abuse issues and co-, what are known as co-occurring dependencies being substance abuse and mental health issues. Uh, that's one of the contracts and the third contract is for our grant administrator who will oversee and supervise the provision of these services under the contract. Uh, I'm here this evening to ask for a budget amendment to approve $306,623 for this fiscal year. Now, that obviously is not one-third of the total three years, but the grant overlaps the fiscal year. So, we'll be doing this annually.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Major McFadden?
Major McFadden already answered it, because I was looking at 970,000 dividing it by three and I wasn't coming up with 306.
Yes, we've done that through finance and I believe we may have already, we have had one contract in place, we already expended some of the funds. But it'll, it'll balance out over the period of contract. We'll probably have to get a contract extension with the federal government, which I understand won't be an issue.
Any other questions?
Another question, just a comment, congrats on seeking out and being awarded this grant.
We're very excited, it's a, it's a new concept, Sheriff Hughes has been a big supporter of it. You're familiar with our jail navigator program. This is a big part of the jail navigator program, but it's only a part. We're looking at a lot of community-based services, both with nonprofits, especially our partnership with the Craven Community College, uh, has been a tremendous asset. We now have a GED program in the Craven County Detention Facility. We just had two inmates who passed, uh, the first half of the process to complete their GED program. Uh, and we, so we've got some great partnerships, workforce development. We're trying to stem the tide of recidivism, uh, and instead of just housing inmates, the sheriff has been foresighted enough to see the need to try to go ahead and provide those services, because in the long run, it's going to cost us all less money.
Yes, sir.
All right, hear no additional comments, questions, uh, do you have a motion to approve the budget amendment in amount of $306,623?
So moved.
Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion, we have a second from Commissioner Smith, any discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If someone will, uh, if you will invite, uh, Commissioner Hunt back in, thank you. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening, Chairman.
She'll be right here.
Ma'am.
All right, if the minutes will show, Commissioner Hunt has, uh, come back to the meeting at 6:35, all right?
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come before you tonight. Um, tonight I'm asking for a, uh, budget amendment for our body scanner rollover that was approved, uh, in last year's budget as part of the American Rescue Plan Act money that was used for it. This scanner will go in our confinement facility and scan every inmate, uh, that comes into the facility prior to getting logged in and checked in. Uh, it's going to help us a number of reasons, one, it's going to measure for high temperatures, which has been very crucial in keeping our COVID count down at all times. This is also going to, uh, look for any contraband items that might be snuck into the jail as a lot of these inmates are very creative now in how they get it in there. So, what we're looking to do is just roll over the money, this was ordered back in April and we still not have, uh, we haven't received the, the product yet, the vendor is telling us it should be coming at any time. So, the sooner it gets here, the better, but because we did not meet the cutoff, we're going to need to roll this over.
Okay, any questions, comments for the sheriff?
Moved to approve.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hunt, that is to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $153,138. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Sheriff, you want to share anything with us this evening?
Uh, no, sir, uh, we, we've been very busy, there's been a lot of, uh, activity in the county as usual. We continue to go after our gang members and drug dealers, we're preparing for school, we just wrapped up our first summer camp, uh, with many of our students, that was run by our dare program, so we're very excited about that and got a lot of positive feedback. And I do want to take a second and I wish the firemen were still here. Uh, when, uh, the chief talked about our working relationship, it is extremely close, we rely on those folks. When the trees are down across our roadways and I, I noticed one of their grants covered chainsaws.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not DOT that clears the road, so we can get through to our 911 calls. Uh, it's, it's our volunteer fire departments and, uh, I'm very grateful. We trained with them, we support them, they support us and, and I thank y'all for supporting them as well. Uh, because it is, it's a volunteer force and I don't know what we do without them.
Amen.
Yep, thank y'all.
Any questions for the sheriff, anybody?
I have one. We have an SRO in each school?
Um, we will, yes, ma'am. Uh, we're still in the process of hiring and recruiting, but every school will have a designated SRO in them day one.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Staff, you got anything? Thank you again for being here, Sheriff, appreciate what you're doing. All right, item eight is, uh, Water Department, Mr. Dale Booth, our water superintendent, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well.
Good evening.
The Water Department budgeted to replace two F-150s last year. The order was placed in July and much like anything involving vehicles, has not been delivered as of yet. So, we're asking that the Commissioners approve the budget amendment to roll over the $59,784 to cover the cost of the two F-150s and the tax and tags included for this year's budget.
Okay, uh, any questions from Mr. Booth? Hear none, what's desired of the board?
I move that we approve the budget amendment.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of $59,784. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you for all you do, appreciate you getting that space.
Commissioners, we are getting ready to get into, uh, probably a lengthy conversation, a very important one, um, this evening about social services. I'm going to ask that we take probably, uh, five to 10-minute recess and we'll come back and, uh, begin with Mr. Merrick. All right, Commissioners, we'll come back to order. We're at item nine, uh, social services, the Medicaid expansion presentation and consideration. Mr. Jeff Merrick, good evening, sir.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, County Commissioner, thank you. Um, I want to let you know who we have moving, this is Ms. April Rollins, if you'll stand up a second, Ms. Rollins. Um, she's our income maintenance administrator, she is the division head over our largest department there, 98 people including her. Ms. Rollins is a Craven County native, born and raised, she's been with our agency for 28 years, started her career under the infamous supervision of Ms. Charlene Richards. Um, and, you know, now she leads our largest division and her, like Ms. Cook, her most crucial parts are our agency and the services that we provide our citizens that, you know, I couldn't do my job without individuals like them, so I wanted to say that first. Um, but we come and bring to you the latest information that's been on a hot topic, I guess, it's almost two years now. It seems like it's becoming closer and closer to becoming a reality. Um, so we will begin our presentation, next slide, please. So you can see this is information about the law, um, this law was signed into state law earlier this legislative session. I want to bring into, um, a specific date right there underneath Part 1A. It states, it doesn't say June 2023, but that's June 2024, so I know we're in our current legislative session, um, but it has to become law by then or it shall expire on that date for those sections. And I've got, um, so that's interesting, um, I know that there's been some talk in the legislature about Medicaid expansion, um, currently and maybe it's not as certain as possible, so that leaves a little bit of wiggle room, but we want to, it's, we want to try to go ahead and get prepared for it since we've got a start date now on October, um, 1st that's been announced by the DHHS secretary. So, I would just explain in those next, um, slides, next slide, please, Mr. Steve. Won't read all this, but this is kind of states those sections where, um, that it does not have impact on. So, if you see some financial language related to the hospital health advancement, um, talks about, you know, county administration funding is in that law, so that stays in there. Um, and just some notification by CMS, it's the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services by DHHS, um, approves the healthcare access stabilization program. Next slide, please. So, the current law that was passed, this states the following for funding, you can see, um, we are outside of fiscal year 22, 23, um, and fiscal year 23, 24, this is if the law is passed in effect. So, counties will get, uh, $1,667,000 for each month it is, um, enacted through fiscal year 23, 24. Um, so then it goes by each quarter in 24, 25, so that number continues to creep up and then that subsequent fiscal years and there's not an end date in the language, so, um, unless there is, in the legislation. So, if there is, um, the law is impact, enacted through the budget process, then it will be, um, increased over the prior year's quarterly amount by the Consumer Price Index.
Jeff, um, the, the funding there is cumulative of all counties, not for Craven County, meaning we would get a proportional share based on our Medicaid eligibility or base, something like that.
Right, the current, the current funding formula was based upon the number of Medicaid recipients in its totality of the number of Medicaid recipients in North Carolina.
I'm really confused.
Sorry.
Okay, is the, uh, I'm all, 74 million?
Seven million, four-
Seven million, 400,000. That's across all counties?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, as opposed to just coming to this county?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
The reason I note that is because when you look at the last 10% of all the Medicaid eligible per people, our share is going to be much smaller than some of the larger counties, but we'll have some of the same burden with staff, infrastructure, things that come along with it, just point of record there.
Right, just like it, just like every county will, is what, um, county manager, those challenges with the resources. Uh, but yes, those will be spread across all, uh, counties.
Based on population?
I believe there's a base, so everybody can get a base and then it's based on Medicaid eligible participants, is that correct?
Right, and that's right, so they want each county to at least get $5,000 apiece, so they give every county $5,000 and then they take those remaining funds, from what I understand, and take it and do their percentage based upon the number of Medicaid eligible recipients in the percentage of the total, so-
Not to give away the secret sauce to the later slide, but there's roughly 2.9 million, I think, uh, 290,000 eligible bucks and we have roughly 1% of that, Commissioners, so that would be kind of our fractional share if you look at that one. I believe this is on the last slide, Mr.-
Yeah, and we did in your packet on page 197. Um, you will kind of see the allocations of funds and on those, it has Medicaid beneficiaries and percentage of total caseloads. So you can go by each county and see that and on page 199, it actually has the total number, 2.9, excuse me, you're right. Um, has the total number of those receiving in North Carolina, so that's in your packet.
2.9 total for all North Carolina and Craven County is roughly 20-
Apparently now 28,111, yeah, yes, thank you. So, that is a point of reference, at least from, when we, if you want to go back and look at that from the letter that was sent out in May of, um, May, May 17th, 2023.
Okay. Any other questions before we move any further? All right?
Next slide, please, so there's also some additional one-time funding that required DHHS to provide $4 million. Of course, the hospital assessments have not occurred yet, um, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but that is also in support with implement, notice it says implementation, ongoing, um, Medicaid expansion, so that would be a one-time fund. Next slide, please. So, we talked about this a little bit already, I won't speak too much, but there's that May 17th letter where it talked about the funding that we would, um, get some upfront funding. Um, if you can see, we're getting some funding based upon a five-month period, um, where they expected it to be expanded from May through September. Um, and that was as if we were, the counties were receiving that initial 1.667 million. Um, so that's the total amount for five months would be 8,335,000 in addition to that 4 million, okay? Um, so they did their funding formula based upon that, you saw the 4 million on the last slide, they advanced us that. So, if we were getting that 1.667 million, they went ahead and gave us five months, advanced us that money as well. So, then our allocation came out to be $80,258 that we received in May. What, and that is what is said on page 197, you will see that, um, the total that was received all the way to the far right. But that's a little bit of how that funding was advanced.
Okay, that makes more sense.
So, I did some quick calculations, um, based for if Medicaid is expanded for the remaining seven months, that's approximately what we would receive. Um, that's probably not to the dollar, but somewhere pretty close. Next slide, please. So, we want to talk a little bit about our Medicaid caseloads, um, me and Ms. Rollins have been really looking hard at these and, um, when Medicaid expansion first started being discussed, uh, we were looking at what our caseload numbers were. So, our average caseload from June 21 to June 22, and we use that number and I want to explain that, um, is that we may have had more individuals who were applying and the state wanting us to determine them eligible in a lower program. So, this is really what our true number would probably look like before the expanded Medicaid expansion individuals would come on. So, about 24,267, and that's the number of individuals and that's the number of cases. So you got to remember that cases can be one person, cases can go up to as many people in a household and family, children's Medicaid that are eligible for it. You know, some of our adult Medicaid programs, those are individuals who are more, one, maybe two people in a caseload because you're looking at lower-income individuals with social security. Um, our long-term care, special assistance, those are more like one person on a caseload, there's some of our smaller caseloads. But, um, because you're, those individuals are getting assistance with financial support for nursing home skilled level of care or assisted level, assisted living, um, level of care. Our family and children's Medicaid programs, those are ones that help out with, you know, it could be just the children, it could be the parents and the children who help provide, um, medical insurance coverage for their medical services. So, I just want to let you know that when you see that 15,419, that's the caseload, the number of individuals within that caseload is a 24,267.
Help me with this number, 24,000 is the caseload, the number of citizens- Help me with this number. 24,000 is the caseload. The number of citizens served was 24. 24,000 individual citizens?
Individual people on, on our caseloads.
We're talking about one-fourth of the citizens of our county.
Right. That was from June 21 to June 22. In May of '23, it had gone up to 28,111 because with the continuous coverage under the COVID public health emergency, we could not deny eligibility to anybody. So individuals that we would come on and we could recertify them and say, well, you're not eligible based upon our current rules with the waiver, they would have to be allowed to stay on the Medicaid.
Permanently or just temporarily?
No. Now, now since the waiver has been revoked, then what we're able to do is that we're starting to be able to go through when their recertification comes up and determining them eligible, give them their notice. If they can't provide information, then we're able to remove them from the rolls.
Okay.
But the challenge there is, is that many of these individuals will probably be eligible under Medicaid expansion. So if Medicaid expansion comes back at that 5,904 is what the numbers we have from DHHS. So they will most likely be re-enrolled once Medicaid is expanded.
It's just kind of staggering to me that a quarter of our population are eligible for Medicaid. Can I hear another question?
Does this mean we'll have additional manpower required?
Well, that's what we're going to talk about here today, Ms. Smith. Yes, I have that one of my slides in recommendations. We would need some additional resources.
Commissioner Mitchell.
I want to make sure that I, what I understand is what I'm supposed to understand. One case could be one person, or it could be five people.
Or more, right. That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. Many people, I just want to think, well, you've got 15,000,419 cases. Each person doesn't get their own case.
Right.
But the number of citizens.
Right, right.
24,000.
Right.
This may not be the place to ask this, but Jack, FQHC. So a lot of our, the citizens that are utilizing our federally qualified healthcare through the Health Department, would a lot of those individuals now be eligible for this? So what does that do to FQHC funding?
It's actually a good problem to have because the folks would actually have Medicaid versus being on a sliding scale or a no pay scenario.
So it don't hurt us?
It wouldn't hurt us at all.
Okay.
Actually, quite frankly, getting folks Medicaid who are in this, I don't know, Jeff, the right word to call it. It has a name, the folks that aren't quite qualified.
I would just call it a gap.
Yeah, there's a gap in the coverage. It will allow for them to have some coverage. And it actually, I wish the sheriff was still here, but this, one of the groups that's most impacted by this is the inmates, right? Right now, we cover 100% of all those calls. And if they do need to go somewhere, particularly at the hospital, it's twice the Medicaid rate. So in this scenario, if they qualify for Medicaid, Medicaid would cover it. So we would be, it would save the taxpayers some, some financial needs.
Okay, to expand on that a little bit. So those that you, let's say you have, you've got individuals, adults, who, you know, the family have not claimed them, they're now your responsibility. They're in a nursing home or whatever, it's costing taxpayers, they're having to pay for their care. Do you see any of this, this Medicaid expansion helping in any of those cases?
We'd have to look at the income eligibility requirements, Chairman Jones, but I would say that we would see more individuals approved for that. Maybe not a great number, but we would see more that could possibly be approved to where hopefully Medicaid could go in and start paying for those services instead of the county possibly having to pay for those. So.
The bottom line is what you're, what I'm hearing you say is what local tax dollars now that are paying are now going to be substituted with state or federal.
That's correct.
Tax dollars.
That's right.
Passed through the state to us.
That's right. And at a reduced cost, right? Because right now, we're paying vice Medicaid rate. So it's more than someone who'd pay one time the Medicaid rate, right?
All right. Any additional questions before we move on to the next thing?
So just want to bring you up the last one. So what we did is we looked at the number of individuals in addition to those regular caseloads, number of individuals will be added to 5,904 on top of the 24,267, and that's a 23% increase in the number of individuals. So next slide, please. So this is your, Ms. Smith, you were right on time. So this is our projections on the next slide. So our, this is our current staffing levels. The next, and we're going to talk about that, and we're going to talk about the ones with 23% increase. So what we did is that we just went straight 23% increase across the board. So our family and children's Medicaid is our largest. We have about 17,000 cases there.
Eighteen.
So that's a vast majority of our caseload there. So that's why you see the most supervisors, lead workers or trainers. So those individuals are ones that help train our new staff. They help review. They do continuous quality improvement. They review cases. They also help carry a small caseload as well. And those 27 income maintenance caseworker two positions are the ones that do the, that do the eligibility determination process in that unit. So I won't say that for the rest of them, but our adult Medicaid unit is our second largest one. I think we have about 5,000, 6,000 currently. So adult, so you'll see that's our number of staff in that unit. And I talked about those. Those are our individuals who are, you know, low income, you know, can't, you know, they fall within that category. These are our caseloads of maybe one to two people on them at the most. And our last one, this is our smallest caseload, but this is our most complex program, our long-term care special assistance program. And that's for individuals who have health needs and they need assistance with assisted living level of care through special assistance or nursing or skilled nursing level of care through our long-term care program. And these caseworkers, they have to go back and do an extensive history, even more, I mean, our others do too, but this one is much more, much more advanced because, you know, we're having to look back and see if people had assets or resources that could have gone and helped pay for this first under the eligibility policy rather than, and see if they are eligible after that, do they need to spend some of that down? Do they not have any where we can go ahead and they would make them automatically eligible to kind of help them to see when they will become eligible or if they will be eligible. Right, April? Next slide, please. So here we talk about our staffing needs, Commissioner Smith, where we went to 23%. So if Medicaid fully expanded, you see family and children's Medicaid. So we would need seven new income maintenance caseworker twos in addition to those 27 to handle that new 23%. And you have to have upper-level support for that. So two more lead workers that would help train those, that would help do continuous quality improvement, and one supervisor. Because if you get seven more, you're getting 17 people, and that's a lot for one person to supervise.
16 people.
So in our adult Medicaid division, we would just need three new income maintenance caseworker twos. And in our long-term care special assistance, this is one where the cases are more complex, so we would need three more. And there are income maintenance caseworker threes to do, and that classification is done through North Carolina State Human Resources due to the little bit more complexity of eligibility. Again, this is when fully expanded.
I'm still not clear, and I'm sure everyone else understands this, but when we say cases, we're saying we are talking about additional people? Are we talking about the same people having additional needs?
These are.
Being covered by additional?
These are additional people who are not currently covered under the.
Under any, any services.
Right, under the current eligibility rules. So, right. Yeah, these will be additional.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I haven't seen, Commissioner Smith, I haven't seen where, you know, they're going to expand any services, you know, under the Medicaid policy. It's just they're going to expand the eligibility to where more people are eligible to receive.
Got you.
So next slide, please. So this new staff, just to give you a little bit of idea of what they'll have to do, of course, they're going to handle the workload. You know, there's three things that we do in handling a caseload. One is new application. So if someone wants to come in and apply our family and children's Medicaid, say mom and dad come in and they have five children, then we take that application. And we go through the eligibility process. We get their information that's required to determine eligibility, expenses, income, things such as that. And let's say we determine them eligible. So then we have to, we have to do recertifications, which is once every 12 months on each case that we have based upon the date of application. So that's ongoing. So the recertification takes information and looks back and says, are you still eligible to continue to receive? Right? So that's done once every 12 months, once you become eligible. So if someone goes through the recertification process and they're not eligible, then we would have to send them a notice and say, based upon your most current information, you're not eligible to receive. You have this much time to give us additional information. If you don't give it to us, then we, you know, remove you from the Medicaid service. And there's also changes. And this is where people call in, they may have a change in address, they may have a change in income, you know, the household, the tax household composition may change. So they take those changes too. And we have many of those, telephone number changes, address changes are our biggest ones. But we may have changes to where cases, people move here from other counties and they get transferred. Because if you're receiving in Swain County out in the west part of the state, someone comes to Craven County, then they're still under their recertification period, we would take over that case. Same thing if someone from Craven moved to Swain County. So in 2017, the legislature passed a law that said if there's Medicaid eligibility determination errors, and it's not a sole error of the state, then counties are held responsible for the payback for eligibility errors. So, you know, I would just say this, and I think you've heard me say, we do as much as we can to try to eliminate that risk as much as possible. You know, we're humans, you know, our staff, they are, it's, they are very well aware of the impacts of their decisions. And I will say that I, you know, with our staff, they do make an error, it's something to where they are very, you know, they look at it, we help them learn from their mistakes, and we try to make sure it doesn't happen again. But this policy is very extensive. It's very cumbersome. Our system's cumbersome. So it does, it sets us up to where trying, meeting, meeting perfect is very difficult, even though we still try. But these staff would also be crucial to ensure that we try to reduce that risk of error as much as possible. Because if you add 23% on top of the current staff, and they're sitting there trying to get the work done in a timely manner, we don't want them cutting corners or trying to rush through that and possibly miss us something and increase in our likelihood of risk of errors. Next slide, please. So the state, I want to say, you may hear some things from the state about things they're trying to do to help the counties with the Medicaid expansion that's forthcoming. And this is a term that is called straight-through processing. So what this is, is that when we first got NCFAST, they told us, hey, you know, whether you apply for Medicaid or food nutrition or daycare, and some of you remember when NCFAST came around, Mr. Merrick's going to be able to go in and he's going to be able to give you my expenses. I'm going to be able to give you my demographic information for my family, names, date of birth, address, telephone number, and it's going to be able to do, 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 and tell you what it is, right? Well, that never came to fruition. And now the state is telling us that they're going to have a straight-through processing, basically what they said before, to where counties will not have to touch these cases that if individuals came in and say through e-Pass, they put in all their information, they gave enough information that they would be able to determine eligible through NCFAST. We're doing that right now. However, we're seeing a very low percentage. And I've asked DHP for those. I think our last ones are approvals. The last ones I saw, how many were approved through a straight-through processing was 0%. And I think our denials were low single digits, three, four, five, or six, something like that. They're supposed to be making changes. They will increase that number. However, I guess I would just say I'll believe it when I see it. And I will tell you that even the ones that we see now that has gone through the straight-through processing, you know, we've started to see some that are, I think those percentages have gone up some. I just don't have an actual one. But to where a case has been approved for Medicaid. Our staff look at it and they say, well, we find errors in their eligibility determination. But we're kind of stuck because if we touch them, does the state come back and say, well, the county, you had your finger in it, and then it's, your hands in it, and then they say, well, it's not solely a state error. So then they try to make us pay it back. So, right, we've been told not to touch them. So that just causes us a little bit of hesitancy about how much of a help this will actually be. And I will tell you, I, you know, I'm very strongly of the opinion, and Ms. Rollins is too, is that there's going to come a time where these cases have to be corrected, and the counties are going to have to do some work on them. Because the state doesn't have the manpower to go through and touch all those cases and make the changes themselves. So that's going to be additional work on us, I would strongly believe. Next slide, please. So the next thing you'll hear is that the state is going to say that we're going to have the federally facilitated marketplace. You probably remember this in 2013 with Affordable Care Act, where states would have the option to set up their own federally facilitated marketplace where their citizens of the state could go in and they could apply. Well, that happened in 2013. However, that portal was so dysfunctional, the state had to stop it, and then everyone had to go through the federal portal. And they're saying now, well, the new federally facilitated marketplace, which has to be approved through legislation, you know, would allow for people to come in and they would determine Medicaid eligibility for them. I'm a little bit skeptical in that it didn't work in the past. It's one of those things I'd rather wait and see how, wait and see it happen instead of promising on that. You know, we've had other directors in the state who've gone through Medicaid expansion in other states where they were directors, and they tell us that, you know, without this, they didn't know what, what they would do in regards to getting through all the applications and recertifications, helping them take that load off. And the states told us that it will not be available when Medicaid expansion begins, which while it will be helpful in the long run, it's really needed at the beginning because that's where we think we're going to see that initial surge of applications, and it's not be able to pick those up and do what it's intended to do. So, next slide, please. So they talk about our manual transitions of clients in Medicaid. So the state has told us initially it was, you know, you need to, you need to approve individuals for the highest level of care. But now they want us to approve us for the very lowest level of care and then find the next program for them. Because the plan is for the state, they say that these individuals who are in the lowest level of care are maybe going to meet that eligibility criteria for full, for a higher level of program that provides more services. So when Medicaid expands, they won't have to come in and apply. They say that they can just switch them over from that plan to the, to the higher level of plan that will now be covered under Medicaid expansion. However, Medicaid expansion hasn't been passed yet. They were hoping that was going to be passed before we would have to start taking those individuals off the rolls, which we've started with the end of the public health emergency. So those individuals are being taken off now, and, you know, the longer it goes on, the more individuals are going to have to come back and reapply. And we also are concerned in that they talked about a change in NCFAST where they're going to have to do this and the counties aren't going to have to touch it. And me and Ms. Rollins were in the office one day, and I said, I'm trying to think of one thing where the state said that we would not, that they were going to do something all through NCFAST and the counties weren't going to have to touch it. And we thought of things, but every time the county had to do some work. So again, I'm hopeful they deliver on their promises. However, I'm just based upon past history, a little bit skeptical. So this challenges, next slide, please. I'm sorry, Steve. So the next slide, you know, we want to talk about the challenges to successfully implement Medicaid expansion. Unless we talked about with more, with more cases and more responsibility, more resources, we already talked about all of these and what the needs for. So next slide, please, Steve. So we will need to train those new staff. So they gave us a timeline last week and depending upon when the, oh, not last week, a couple of weeks ago, Jack, I think. And they told us that, you know, this is dependent upon a budget being passed by the state. And they said if one is not, you know, if it wants passed at the end of August, they're going to start in 30 days, October 1st, which is a very ambitious timeline. If it's not passed by August and that date starts getting moved back, maybe as late as 2024. So our staff still have to be trained, and we've trained them in each one of those areas because you would think you do applications and a recertification, when you train them, those rules and eligibility processes and policies would be very much the same, and they're not. So we have to take one, and we have to, in the same way with changes, we have to get someone up to speed on applications to where our trainers work with them. They learn the application process, they start getting cases, we slowly build them up, we look at their percentages of where their eligibility determination percentages where they're correct, and then we go to the next process. So it takes, you know, six to nine months to fully train a Medicaid staff person. Sometimes it's a little bit earlier depending upon the person. It's varying. But as you can see, 30 days for six to nine months, you know, we're not, you know, if they, if they start October 1st, we can't post and hire and get new people, even the ones that, and start to train them. They really put us in between a rock and a hard place.
And to state.
Next slide, please. And I guess this is the wild card when it comes to Medicaid expansion. They told us how many new individuals they project us to receive. And we got those numbers back in April 2022, and they have not given us any more. There's, the state is sticking with those numbers. But they cannot guess how many new applications we'll receive. If someone comes and wants to apply for a Medicaid application, then we cannot deny them. They have to let them apply.
Can't deny the application.
Can't deny them from applying. We can deny the application, but if someone wants to come and apply, I mean, even if someone told us a high, you know, an amount of what they made, they said, well, I make this much money, I have this much in reserves. And in our mind, we were like, there's a lot of expenses that would have to make them eligible for that. We still can't say, no, that's too much. We say, okay, you want to apply? Here you go. And we go through the process. And we think that, you know, with Medicaid expansion, we, we're probably going to get a good number of people that apply that may not be eligible. we, we're probably gonna get a good number of people that apply that may not be eligible, but they're gonna say, well, hey, what's the harm in applying? I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be in any worse position now. I mean, there's a penalty for applying and getting denied. So, we just don't know how many applications we see. We expect, we will get a very large increase of applications from our, those in the healthcare industry, we'll get a, you know, from our health department. And there's just no way to determine how, how many of those we'll get. And there's also no way to determine, they didn't tell us all that 5,904, what program they would apply to, like, how many would apply on long-term care, how many would apply on adult Medicaid, how many would apply on family children's Medicaid. They can't break it, write that number down. Next slide, please. So, as you can see, we've got some challenges to process applications in a timely manner. You know, develop our resources and our staff prior to the go-live date. You know, I would probably use the word impossible at this point, even if it's early 2024, when you're talking about a six-month timeframe to hire and getting them come in and train them. Our current workforce, for the number of new possible applications, is one that it's gonna be most likely impossible to continue, you know, to work those applications as fast as we normally like to, if there's a 23% increase. So, we really have to look, you know, there's still the law out there where there's a payback, there's a county error. So, we're gonna have to try to look at the balance of completing those accurately versus timeliness. And then also take into account the recertifications, because if a recertification comes up, and say the recertification is August 1st, and we wait four months to do that, and we find out four months later, that, and we, well, we have to do those in 10 months' time, because the state wants us working two months ahead. So, if we don't do it by June 1st, and we let that go on, and we find out that they're ineligible later, then we have to pay back that capitated rate in Medicaid transformation the county does. So, we've gotta look to see, you know, an application, if it goes over, there could be consequences where our timeliness percentage goes down, and the state starts to, you know, come, come to us and say, you need to get your timeliness percentage up. However, we're, the thing, the thing that's hurting us there is just that, you know, those eligibility hasn't been determined to be able to start Medicaid, to start paying for things. Which that date is held on the application date. So, if someone comes in on August 1st, and says, applies, and even if we don't do it till November 30th, which I hope is not that long, it will still go back and pay for those services till August 1st. Recertification, you're not gonna be able to get out of that when it's, when you start seeing the paybacks, right? And we don't want to rush through the application either, because if we determine they're ineligible, we're not looking at it again until 10 months down the road.
But just to clarify what you said, you've gotten to June 1st of 2024.
If they came in today.
If they came in. So, there's, how many months after, from the date that you apply, till you have to do it?
Well, we have, we, well, our applications, there's no, they want us to be done in 45 days, some in 90 days. So, the policy says 45 days, when someone comes and applies. So, August 1st, if they came in, they will want us to have that application, all the information, do it through the eligibility process by September 15th, 45 or so days.
What's the penalty if you can't complete?
There's no, the penalty is that the state measures us, and they look at that, and we could be put under a corrective action plan, or something like that, right now. The secretary on his call spoke and said, he understands the situation that local department of social services is, are in, however, we don't receive a lot of mercy from the state as it is now.
That must be true of every county, though.
Right. There's gonna be, I mean, every, every county, every county is in the same situation we are in. It doesn't matter if they pass their positions in the budget, or they're doing it, or they may, or they've done it on, you know, the middle of July, or even like their first August meeting. Every county is in the same situation.
The state has also started notifying, well, recipients, applicants, if we take an application, and we do not process it within their timeframe, they start sending the client notice saying, your application is overdue, your application is overdue. So, it's like they're telling the clients that we're not doing what we're supposed to do.
Right. And I would think that feature would continue, even with the increased volume and the new staff. So, that's more telephone calls that we'd be taking, trying to explain that, and taking up more worker time from trying to have to do the work to get people eligible or ongoing eligibility.
So, when an individual applies, the application goes to you and the state? How does the state know?
It goes to us. In our NC FAST system, Ms. Smith, they're able to track those. All the county department of social services work in that, that's where those applications are, are determined through, whether they apply through online, or whether they come into agency. If someone mails us an application, we have to enter them into. We date stamp it, and so, the date of application is actually the date we, the date that we receive it in the agency. Next slide, please, Mr. Steve. So, recertifications, we already talked about the lower level and not having to touch those. As we talked about, you know, you've, what you'll hear the state say is, well, you're already doing recertifications for one program, you know, it's not gonna be that much different for the other. Well, this other program, there's the eligibility requirements, and what you have to check, isn't quite as much, isn't as much as what you're gonna have to do on these higher-level Medicaid programs. It's gonna take our staff more time. You know, I don't wanna give you an exact number of minutes, but, you know, it may take, if it takes 10 minutes more each time, you know, that's 10 minutes each recertification of those 5,904 that were in that lower one. So, that's a, quite a bit amount of time just to do the recertification. So, as we said that, we talked about the role, you know, if the client falls out of the rollover procedure, like we talked about, where they were gonna roll these cases over, and determine ineligible, they're gonna come back in and apply. And we talked about avoiding paybacks and recertification with, we really wanna get to these within 10 months, because if we don't do it, then they could be, they may have information we didn't get to in time, and they would charge, and they would require paybacks for that. Next slide, please, Mr. Steve. So, just some things that we've thought about that need to be prepared for. We understand that very much so, that this is a very big revenue stream for our medical providers, our hospitals, our county health departments, our local doctors' offices, and we're cognizant of that. And the quicker we can do the eligibility process, the quicker the reimbursements are able to bill Medicaid and get those reimbursements back. But, you know, we've already had conversations with medical providers, like I've said, about, hey, when's Medicaid expansion starting? And I kindly say the law has not passed yet. Now that I can say the tentative date is October 1st, but the budget has to be passed. We expect, and they've already communicated with us, you know, where we're really gonna start looking for those people who aren't insured, and trying to get them to do a Medicaid application. So, like we talked about earlier. That would be increased calls for our staff, you know, people may be calling, asking about the new details of the program. You may get calls about it, you may say, look, we've had a Medicaid application that, you know, was done on this date, and it's passed the 45 days. So, I just want you to be, I will assure you, we're working as hard as we can in a manner to try to get them processed accurately, and as timely as possible as we start to try to ramp up, given the prior notice of the start of Medicaid expansion, and our ability to try and get resources in place to handle that. Next slide, please. Next slide, our clients, some of the same things, increased calls to staff, you know, they may call about new details as well, just like the providers. We really don't like giving out the new details, because then, we don't want providers or clients saying, well, you'll be eligible, since they're not the experts. We would just encourage them, if you think someone's interested in applying, they need to come to our office. You may get calls, as we said too, about an application, like the notices Ms. Rollins said. And I'll just repeat what I said about our staff working as hard as we can. And I will say, you know, that is, you know, our staff do stress when they look and see overdue applications or recertifications, because it's not just the timeliness percentage, but they hear the stories of our individuals who are calling and trying to get these services, and they know what's on the line there. You know, if there's, if we get a call, and, you know, a medical provider says, hey, look, if we don't get this application, we're not gonna be able to do this surgery on this person, you know, we may, we'll try to expedite those where we can. But, that's something that our staff, you know, I don't think they're, well, I don't think, I know they won't become apathetic to say, well, you know, we're working as hard as we can. They take this work home with them, you know, they take those stories home with them, just like our staff in child welfare and adult services do, and hearing these, hearing these hardships that, of why these services are needed. So, next slide, please. So, some of what Craven County can do to support a successful expansion, support and understanding by citizens and organizations. You know, I just wanna stress again, our staff is gonna be working as hard as they can to try to process those cases as fast as they can. And I just want everyone to try to know that. So, we put, you know, we may, it may take a little longer for us to get back to a voicemail or a telephone call, but we will get back to it. And if someone doesn't, they can call the supervisor, they can call Ms. Rollins, and I, if I get a call, we immediately say, hey, look, look into this for us. So, you know, balance about being completed versus doing our best to lower the risk of errors, we talked about that earlier. And then, at times, you know, this delay in processes may be out of our control. You know, we work in NC FAST, I do not know how NC FAST is gonna be able to handle a 23% increase in Medicaid applications. In addition to food nutrition applications, we have times where it's been down for four days in a month, which is 20% of our work time. You know, that's one day out of four weeks, that we weren't able to go in and process applications, even if we wanted to, because there was an issue with the system.
And crashes?
That's probably a pretty good word for it. They don't tell us that, Ms. Hunt, but it's something to where one, one eligibility piece that's needed to approve it is down, and they're having to do maintenance on it, or they're having an issue, they're having an issue with login, one system's not talking to the other, those are some of the examples that we see. That could be the case as well. Next slide, please. So, you know, some resources, we, we've just asked that new staff that are proposed are considered over a period of time right now. We know the issues with space around building, Mr. Davis here, he knows it too. And I think y'all do as well, when it comes to the space study. But, you know, we are very appreciative of our current building, and hopeful of the, of the building being built, and hopeful of possible future renovations in our current one.
Hold on just a second, take you a breather there, and get you some water. Talk to us a little bit, Jack, about where this, these new individuals, if they're approved, where they would go.
Sir, so, what Mr. Merritt's gonna ask you in just a few minutes, is for three new individuals right now, of course, if there's funding approval, we'll need to come back and have a different discussion with you. Right now, there is one space that is still available, it can be broken down into three workstations, including the budget amendment is a cubicle system that Steve and his team researched, and I believe we've used a couple other times, Steve. And we would recommend you do that for these three. Obviously, Mr. Jean, and part of my manager's comments, I'll, I'll kinda go ahead, skip ahead, and looking for a groundbreaking in October, and hopefully, year, year to, year to 15 months, get the building built. And once that's done, that'll really free up and help April kinda expand her crowd she has now, but also make room for future growth, and of course, give Jeff some other opportunities. This isn't the only division in DSS, however, it's the biggest. We do have space needs in other areas too, which this will help. So, that's the plan right now.
Right. We've got people, two, two in our office in social work, in social work offices, which is an ability to work when you're talking about sensitive information too. You know, in April, I would say she finds every nook and cranny in our office that she can try to convert in these types of cases. And, you know, we, we are trying to utilize every inch of space that we have, to its maximum ability.
All right. Any questions at, to this point, commissioners? All right?
Next slide, please. So, I just wanna iterate what we'll do. We'll, Steve, continue to provide excellent customer service to our citizens. We talked about our staff wanting to ensure timely eligibility, and they know the consequence of not doing so. You know, they're gonna be working as hard as possible to try to meet the needs during this time of expanding work. And, you know, we're gonna try to train fastest, train new staff as fast as we can, so that they can be up and doing eligibility process to try to help out with this increased workload. Next slide, please. So, things maybe you can do. I will say that, you know, the latest numbers we have, it's gonna be a boosted economy by $4.3 billion. So, I think that's what, the total state budget is, what, 29 billion, they're saying, they're saying this year? So, three, you're looking at almost 3% of the budget. But, none of this can occur unless the individuals are determined eligible first. You know, hospitals, when they start getting more money in their revenues, that's probably when they're gonna start hiring new people. Same thing with doctors' offices, same thing with everything else Medicaid touches, medical supply companies, you know, physical therapy companies. I mean, all of these, all of these places receive Medicaid-covered services. But, we've gotta get them eligible first, and we've got to make sure that we can continue to keep up with the demand. So, one thing is, is that we believe that doing these services on the county level are the best way to do them. We know our clients, our clients are their caseworkers, we know our county, we know the needs of our county, and we would just hate to see a shift to where there's some centralized location in another county like Wake or Mecklenburg, trying to determine eligibility services for citizens of Craven County. Then it would get out of our control. You could call me, but then I'd have to call someone at the state. I don't think that's gonna happen, but I don't know what type of discussions are gonna come up when Medicaid expansion starts.
I would say board, agree.
I would ask that if there's something to do, there would be a moratorium in county paybacks due to eligibility determination for at least five years. So, allow counties to get staff, train them, being able to start determining that eligibility, determining those eligibility new cases with our new staff. And there's gonna be some, possibly some new rules too, and getting used to those new rules. Continue to push, the state, right now, they will tell you, they provide us training, most of the time, it's a webinar with hundreds of people on there, and people don't get to ask questions. I mean, so essentially it'd be, y'all listen to me, and I would just read you that PowerPoint, and say, okay, go on. But, we need adequate training. We need a state to be a partner with us. I know they're having staffing challenges too, but, you know, I would just say, when there's issues on our part, and we try to communicate that to them, there's not a lot of sympathy. So, we need, we need their help. And I will say this, you know, the state is working on this. But, you know, right now, this, you know, those of you who work with the manual, most of the time, you have the manual in one book, right? Well, the state will make changes to policy and do an administrative letter, but they won't incorporate that administrative letter into policy. So, you gotta keep up with the administrative letter for the piece of policy where it is, and that's how we make sure we're following policy. Having it all in one policy manual will be great. And I forgot to mention something very much on the first one. You know, additional state and federal dollars offset county costs. You know, you see that $4.3 billion, and that's what they're estimated. I will just say that with our PHP providers, you know, their admin costs are 100% funded by Medicaid. So, you know, we always wonder why can't, you know, that 75, 25% of the county costs be offset a little bit further than what's with this, you know? So, you know, $200,000 is nice, but our cost, even for the new staff, that wouldn't cover all the county costs just for the salaries and benefits alone, much less the additional resources that will be needed, desk, IT, computers, things like that. So, and that's gonna be an ongoing cost for counties. As we know, with things increasing, I wonder if that increase will continue to meet, be, keep up with the rise in costs.
Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, if you're leading us to advocate for certain things, there are ways to keep up with the ongoing costs to Craven County taxpayers. For instance, this isn't, obviously with what you're talking about, there's gonna be a deficit for the, the new staff, right? I mean, we're gonna be paying more than we're receiving for the staff.
Right.
So, as that continues, and that, we continue to run that deficit, it'd be nice for us to know what that number ends up being, so we, when we're talking to the state representative or our state senator, that we can say, hey, look at this, this is what it's costing Craven County taxpayers, nuts and bolts, to Medicaid expansion, when we were kinda promised something else. That's, that's what I would like to see.
Sure. We've, we've got reports, and I'll tell you how we do that. You know, our staff, what they do is that they do their day sheets, and they keep up with their time, and how we get reimbursed, we put that time in, we code them to that, so we, we put their salary and benefits for the month. We get those reports from Craig at Finance, and we put those in, and it comes out, and it, and on the report on the back end, it says how much, you know, federal cost, and how much was county cost. So, you know, we could just get that county cost, and then we can look to see what we're getting each month, and tell you, and tell you what the county costs are with that.
And not only salaries, but also, like you're saying, the IT part of that, and the furniture part of that, and the, whatever, the building part, everything that we need to cover that.
Chair Booker?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and mentioned the chair here real quickly, we, we need to do this as a, as a group. In other words, we don't need to be making 15 calls to the, we need, I think we need a, a comprehensive, here's what we would like to see you do, Mr. Senator, Mr. Representative, so that we're all saying the same thing.
Well, all of it is important, but I, I mean, but if you had to prioritize the first one that I see, and maybe I'm wrong, but, I mean, you've got to have adequate time to train. I mean, to prepare for this. I mean, you know, if the, if, and let me ask this question. So, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has told you, I told you all... all, DSS, you have October 1st a start date if a budget is passed.
Right.
But the legislature, if they pass the budget, if they were to put a start date at a later time, does that override states? So, there is the probability that they could do that.
They could.
I mean, you're going to start out, and people are not prepared. You're going to make mistakes.
That's right.
They're not, they're not being fair in giving you the time to train and be prepared.
And what if the budget gets passed on September 15th?
So, in the, the secretary had a call with county managers and DSS directors two weeks ago. And if it's not passed by September 1st, the start date goes to December 1st or later. So, depending on how long the budget negotiation takes, I mean, I even heard, I think Mr. Merritt alluded to, early 2024. So, I, I think, I think that the HHS went out and said, counties, if there's a budget soon, get ready because we're going to go. I think that was the purpose of the call.
It'd still be in a challenge, though, even if it's early 2024 with hiring and training. So, I mean, we'd be a little bit closer, you know, where there wouldn't be as much of a gap, but we would still be.
I want to still just under here at the end. You know, there's a couple things, we're talking about big, very things here. We've got to find these three people, and then we've got to find the people that we need to ask. And that's no easy feat. Mr. Rollins has open positions right now that are difficult to fill. There's not enough individuals that want to take these jobs in North Carolina. So, if we're hiring three, what's Wake County hiring? What's Green County hiring? What's Pitt County hiring? I mean, it's, it's, again, there's just not enough folks. And Jeff and I have talked about, this is all a DSS. It's not just this, you know, folks coming out of school or community college that want to take these jobs. They're just not there right now.
And I think that's been seen, you know, throughout all types of governmental jobs as well. I mean, I've talked with others where we've seen application numbers six, seven times higher than what we're receiving now. I mean, we get maybe 20, 15 to 20. We used to get 80 to 100 for these types of jobs.
So, how many, how many vacancies does your department have right now?
Right.
Ballpark.
Right now, ballpark, including the new positions? And you just want income maintenance?
Not counting the new, this, I'm just, just.
Oh, I was, I'm talking about the, the new ones that were passing the budget.
Yeah.
We've had some promotions. So, I know right now, we have an income maintenance lead worker. That was a new one you were approving the budget. We had a promotion from an income maintenance investigator, too, to a supervisor. So, that's one. We have, we've got a trainer. Yep. I'm trying to think. We've probably got about.
My point is that you've got some vacancies already.
Right. Yeah.
Before we start trying to bring in this new, this new necessity.
Additional, yeah.
You say you have five?
Yes, because I'm not counting the ones that we're submitting recommendations for.
Yeah, the five, yeah. Okay. All right. Jeff, to kind of sum up, you got any last words?
Last slide. Just want to say thank you. You know, just know that this adventure, we're not undertaking, you know, and I've said it like, like our individuals at the volunteer fire departments have said, you've always been very responsive to us, and we want to thank you for the things you've done for us as well and understanding that, you know, it's going to be a crucial time for us, so. And I guess the next, the big question is the consideration of an initial three positions of income maintenance caseworker.
All right. Don't go far. Commissioners, if we can, let's turn it over to county manager just a minute, and then we'll watch.
I'll try to make this easy here and kind of combine 9A and 9B. Jeff, you gave a great presentation. I think you outlined it. So, what we're asking for tonight is the creation and approval of three new income maintenance caseworker two positions. And then in 9B, that simply funds those three positions using the $80,000 we received, Mr. Merritt talked about earlier, a 75-25 federal-county split for the remainder of the salaries, and then all the accoutrements that go along with the new employee, be it the desk system we talked about with Steve, computer, phone, all down the line. That amount is $180,883, and that budget amendment is found in item 9B.
All right, questions? Commissioner Mitchell?
Initially, Mr. Merritt had identified 16 needed positions. This is the first three. Is the long-term plan then to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Add three more and three more, however.
We, we have come up with a bit of a methodology, be three now. When it's approved by the General Assembly, Mr. Merritt would like to come back and request. Jeff, you're going to have to help me. I don't have it with me.
Four more.
Four more when it's approved, and then we would take the remainder under consideration of budget time next year.
Okay. So, this is a phase one, step one?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Other questions? So, initially, what is it, the cost of it to local tax dollars? What is the cost of it out the door?
So, approximately, sir, if we look at page 196 in your, your agenda, titled Budget Amendment, you'll see that we're including $80,000 in revenue, $80,258, and then there's $100,625, which would be the income maintenance staff and overhead. And that, that's on a 75-25. So, approximately 25 and some change would be the local taxpayers' exposure here.
25 for the first.
Ballpark.
Okay.
And I, and I guess I will say, if it is expanded, we'll start getting that 1.677 million, so.
That's right.
More money will be coming in. We'll just have to.
So, and I was talking with the commissioner this morning. So, if you got the $80,000 and you look at it through the fiscal year, I think your chart even showed approximately $112,000 a year is what you're anticipating. So, you'd have roughly $32,000 left to receive for this fiscal year. If, if the budget's approved, with a big caveat, if the budget's approved.
Okay. Additional questions? All right. So, the first item action that staff is asking for is that we first, if it's desire of the board, that we approve the initial three income caseworker two positions. So, this is not the money side. This is just approving the positions. What's the desire of the board?
I make a motion to approve the initial three income caseworkers.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. There's a further discussion on the motion. Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to please call and roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Electably, yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right. So, 9B, this is the budget amendment of the $180,883. And again, just, just the clarifications now on it. So, this will fund the three positions and the furniture, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And telephone. Computers, training costs, a variety of other supply items that a new employee would need.
Okay. So, that's salary plus?
Benefits.
Benefits.
Tirement.
All the little extras.
Yes, sir.
And then, if the budget's passed, you're going to come back and ask for four more at that time. And you would have to do the same thing, furniture, et cetera, et cetera, at that time.
Yes, sir. We'll probably have a little more creative mind in placing the four new people, but yes.
Okay. All right. Questions from the board before we take a motion?
I would just like to, like it to be approved with the caveat of a, some, a report from Jack, just kind of like what I mentioned earlier, balancing out the taxpayer cost on a regular basis, just so we know what we're advocating with our House and Senate.
Absolutely.
I don't see no problem. Yeah. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. What's the desire?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion to.
Second.
And a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $180,883. This is for the three positions, and you heard the, the other stuff that goes along with it. All right. Discussion from the board. The only thing I would like to add for discussion is after we, if the board would consider also, after we do this, I, I would like to take the recommendation of the vice chair, and let's consider approving something to send to our legislative delegation of concerns that we have that's been addressed. So, any further discussion? All right. Here, none. Again, this is for $180,883. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right. So, taking up the vice chair's recommendation. Vice Chair, how do, do you want to include all of that? Or do you want to, how, how do you want to do it?
Yeah, I think the, the concerns that we have, we need to, bullet points, this concern, this concern, and this concern. That needs to, we need to, we need a copy of that, so if we're talking to them, but in the meantime, we need to go to them in writing with those concerns.
As the board. Correct.
With the chairman's signature, kind of like we did with that last, that last letter.
Would it be all right with the board that you, you've got it here before, you allow staff to go ahead and draft it with assistance of Mr. Merritt, and we go ahead and send it on before our next meeting, not bring it back?
Yes.
All right. Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to write a letter to our legislative delegation in North Carolina General Assembly outlining the, the recommendations and concerns that were given to us by Mr. Merritt, the advocacy part. Any further discussion on the motion?
My question would be, would it be appropriate to include some of the leadership in the letter, or just go through our delegation?
We'll have Jeff on that.
I mean, I will, I will say, you know, the, I think the more, the more people that hears it, I think it's something that, you know, doesn't hurt. I mean, I kind of equate it to, I don't know how much you got to lose in making sure that, you know, you communicate it to as many people as possible.
Friendly amendment than to include leadership.
The people that count are, are the senator and the representative, because they're the ones that can dictate to the various people, hey, you got to give these folks some breathing room.
Were you including your motion that, you know, that staff sent it to those that they feel that need to receive?
Yeah, for somebody else that.
One, one way we could do it, see what Commissioner Howard's asking for, we could also share with the other DSS directors that passed in to share with their representatives.
Good idea.
And then we can also send it to the speaker and the president's office.
And I, and I will say, I'm one of the co-chairs of the advocacy committee on the Director's Association, and we've had, you know, Medicaid expansion talking points, you know, these, you know, are based off of those. So, we do have some talking points where our county Department of Social Service has been trying to advocate with our legislators and helping them understand DSS's roles and, you know, the needs that we would have in, for expansion of Medicaid.
All right. Any additional comments? So, you include that in your motion? You okay with the second?
Yes.
That's okay with you, Commissioner Howard?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir. Discussion?
No, that's fine.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. It is to write this letter. Staff, you clear on it?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Jeff, Ms. Rollins, thank you for what you do. You know, I, I will say to the citizens of this county, through our budget process this year, we spent a lot of additional time, probably more so than we've ever done since I've been on this board of commissioners, in going through DSS. Not that we hadn't looked through it before, but you had a lot of needs. You still got a lot of needs. And, and, you know.
And you're going to have more.
And you're going to have more.
Yeah.
But in this past budget, there was, what was included in the past budget?
Six new positions.
Six new, six new positions in this last budget. Here are three more, and it's still counting. So, a lot of taxpayer dollars being invested in. And, and, you know, we got a lot of folks in need. We don't undertake that for granted. But you've got a big department.
Yes. Yes. This is not to you, Jeff, but just to everybody in general. When we talk about the federal government funding, I want to repeat that I've, what I've said before, the federal government has no money, except what we give them. So, when they're giving us this money so generously, it's our money. It's taxpayer money. And what I also see here is, and this is just my opinion, this is one step closer to the federal government taking over our healthcare system in total. And that's just me. Maybe I'm a conspiracy theorist, but that's my view. And I, I, we don't have a choice. Basically, we've got to go along with this. And we're adding more government employees. We're adding more government workers. We're adding more government bureaucracy. It just grows and grows and grows. And it's a concern. It's a concern. So, I, I had to say that. All right. You hear nothing, Neil?
I'll just echo Danny's sentiment, in the sense, the only reason I could vote for this, and I told a commissioner earlier, they've already spent our $100, and they're trying to give 80 or 90 of that back to us. How do you refuse that? But the way you fight it is on the federal level, not here. We have to, we have to provide the services. It's been, it's already been decided. If we don't, we're penalized. So, I'm thankful for the people that are doing that, but also, I do think it's a move in the wrong direction.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, we do.
And I would tell our staff that, too. They're the ones, on a day-to-day basis, we couldn't do it without them, and we're very appreciative of them.
Thank you both.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, five minutes to eight. Economic Development Authorization to Request an Extension of Building Reuse. Mr. Jeff Wood. Good evening, sir.
Evening, Chairman. Evening, Commissioners. This is in regards to Project Indoor. This was a project that was brought to the board about two years ago. Project Indoor is Carolina GSE, now Pilot John International. They have been in our industrial park since 2019. Great company that we've been able to work with. They had made a promise to invest a double the size of the building. They were also going to increase by 15 jobs or a total of 24. They have finished the work on the, the building itself. They have finished the work on the building itself. They have had, much like the rest of our, our industry at this time, struggled to be able to maintain, recruit and maintain a workforce. So they're currently somewhere around 11. I'm working with them to try to figure out how to get another six or seven over the next six months. This has been brought up to EDPNC, our state partners. They are seeing this statewide. I have had a conversation with Commerce, who is the one who funded the grant 100%. There's no county funds that are attached to this, under $20,000. They are seeing something similar as well across the board, and so they have no problem with an extension. I would, would recommend pushing it out for another two years, to give them as much time as possible to make these, make the adjustments that they need, be able to keep their workforce, and have a chance to grow. Also, just on another note, during the building of this expansion, for the second year in a row, they've offered to the county its use as a warehouse in case, God forbid, of a natural disaster, at no cost. So, and this goes with another, another bunch of companies that are in our industrial park. So a really great corporations and good partner for us, want to help in any way we can.
Okay, questions from Mr. Wood?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the request for a two-year extension of the grant agreement. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a comment, that this is a dynamic company, doubling their size in just a short time, and this is a no-brainer to me. I just think it's, they're a great, a great young operation, and it's going to be good for this county long-term.
And I also just want to state for the record that staff did some checking on this, and we have, as a Board of Commissioners, in the past, done this same thing for other companies, due to extreme situations, whether it was hurricane, after Hurricane Florence, economic downturns of our economy. So this is not setting a precedent, it has been done before, so. All right, any other discussion? All right, we do have a motion and a second. Hear no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, item 11, Commissioners, Ms. Amber Parker will come forward again this evening. Hope recovery will be discussed, and we will again ask, we've discussed it with Commissioner Hunt, with her service on that board, that she would need to recuse herself of discussion and voting on this matter due to Senate Bill 473. And we gave the general statute previously as the local government transparency law. So we need a motion to allow her to be recused.
Some of them.
We have a motion and a second to recuse Commissioner Hunt. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Commissioner, we'll call you back in a few minutes. Good evening, Ms. Amber.
Good evening. Tonight, for your consideration, I have a resolution to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds. When I got here, I thought I had one piece of good news for you tonight, but I actually now realize I have two. First is this will not be quite as complicated as Medicaid expansion. Glad I'm going second. The good news that I do have for you is that the money that this resolution addresses is already in the budget. The fiscal year 2324 budget adopted by the board in June included $622,048 of opioid settlement funds for opioid remediation efforts. You might be wondering why we're here, to talk about funding that's already in the budget, and the reason is because we are required to ensure the same dollars comply with two very different and conflicting sets of requirements for how the money is organized in our documentation. First, the funding must comply with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, and the budget does that. Second, we must comply with the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation, commonly referred to as MOA, which this resolution will do. The MOA requires a budget or resolution to specifically indicate that it is an authorization for expenditure of opioid settlement funds. It must state the specific strategy or strategies the county intends to fund pursuant to the MOA's Option A and Option B, using the item letter and/or numbers listed in the Exhibit A or B of the MOA, and identify each funded strategy, and it must state the dedicated timeframe and each strategy that the fund is going to support. The resolution I prepared for your consideration takes the same funds currently in the county's opioid settlement fund budget, and reorganizes them for MOA and reporting purposes to identify which strategies are being funded. Of the $622,048 already approved in the budget, the proposed resolution indicates that $152,548 is authorized to be expended on collaborative strategic planning, which is the MOA Exhibit A, Item 1. $25,000 is authorized to be expended on naloxone distribution, which is the MOA Exhibit A, Item 7. $200,000 is authorized to be expended on post overdose response, which is MOA Exhibit A, Item 8. And $244,500 is authorized to be expended on recovery support housing, which is MOA Exhibit A, Item 4. All of those items should add up to the $622,048 that you've already approved in your budget. At this time, I'm happy to do my best to address any questions that you have, or I ask for you to consider the resolution.
Questions from the board?
I have a question, just looking at 244,500 for recovery support housing. As we expand these things, are we working with not-for-profits, like the RU252 group?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so this money is actually, it would go to, there's money for RU252 that is currently in our recovery support services budget. There's some money for recovery, Reviving Lives Ministries, Hope Mission, and so, these are the same organizations that we talked about at budget time, where we talked about which contract agencies. It's just that in our budget, we budget it based on contract services, and we listed out the agencies. The MOA requires that we list it based on strategy, they don't care so much about the specific agencies. But if you look at the draft of the resolution document, it does specifically list which organizations would get which amount of money based on each strategy.
And just for clarification, for the record, just so nobody don't misunderstand, U252 is not receiving any of this money that we're approving here.
Right, the county already funds that under, so it's interesting with the way we have our opioid program funding, we have a recovery support services budget, which is the program that the county started before we even had the opioid settlement funds. And that's the program where Jasmine Kennedy is our outreach coordinator, and she's doing the prevention and education information. RU252 was already funded under that budget, and it will continue. So the county's goal was to not supplant any of that previously funded program budget with opioid settlement funds, so this is completely separate. So that is continued, it's already in the recovery support services budget.
Okay. And then just another question, I try to think like one of my citizens as they're listening or whatever, the $152,000 for collaborative strategic planning, and we've discussed a little bit, but just for record, define collaborative strategic planning.
Sure, the collaborative strategic planning process is actually a 14-step Exhibit C of the MOA. It gets, it's interesting document, but there are 14 steps that they require for collaborative strategic planning, that the county would have to go through, and basically what it is, involving a long list of stakeholders into the process of determining what the needs are, what the gaps are, there's to put together a report of recommendations to you for consideration, and then you have the option of going with those recommendations, or you could choose to fund other recommendations. But that's what the collaborative strategic planning process is. And this would also cover the opioid program manager position that you created in the budget, and all of the necessary items that would support that, that position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, additional questions? All right, hear no additional questions, what's the desire of the board?
Make a motion that we approve the...
Second.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Smith, a second, Commissioner Howard, adopt the resolution to direct the expenditure of the opioid settlement funds. Any discussion by the board? Hear no matter clerk, and we'll ask you if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Senator Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Amber. All right, if someone, yep, thank you. All right, as the minutes will reflect, Commissioner Hunt returned to the room at 8:04. All right, item 12 is facilities, the approval of the hazardous material abatement contract master planning services for the Sudan property. Mr. Gene Hodges, good evening, sir.
Evening, board. Well, I've got one of the least complicated items, and it's been a bad night for the board. But, anyway, so we've, on December 5th, the Board of Commissioners approved the purchase of the former Sudan temple complex immediately adjacent to the county administration and the court facilities complex. The sale is finalized in January 2023. During the board's budget deliberations for the 2324 budget, the board directed staff to obtain bids for hazard material abatement services related to the property, and to request a proposal with the design team of OCA to develop a master plan for the property. A request for a proposal, RP, was issued for hazardous materials on June 30th. A mandatory pre-bid was conducted on July 10th. Bids were due on July 20th, and we received four bids. They ranged from $84,480 to $98,700. It was a bid tab that was included in your packet. The load bidder was EHGLC, doing business as Alloy Group from Mooresville, North Carolina. The total costs related to the hazardous material abatement are: the contract with Alloy Group for $84,480, third-party air monitoring for $20,000, abatement design services for $27,500, a project contingency of $20,000 for a total cost of $151,980. Additionally, the board gave direction to obtain a proposal to begin the process of master planning. The submitted proposal for all services related to the master planning process is It was also requested for OCA to provide a fee to include, related to preparing demolition plans and specifications. This fee totals $22,000, and that proposal was also attached in your agenda. To move forward, the board has requested to approve project ordinance and related budget amendment in the amount of $373,750, and to authorize staff to execute all necessary agreements for the proposed work. The budget amendment and ordinance is included in your packet. We'll point out that this is coming from the capital reserve fund, fund balance.
All right, any questions for Mr. Hodges? And I think we got some folks in attendance here also that can answer some, any questions?
If, if the board approves this tonight, timing?
They, they will be ready to move fairly quickly on the asbestos abatement. Did they give a timeframe, how long they thought?
I think it's within a 30-day window, but I'm assuming shorter than that.
So within 30 days or shorter than that?
Okay.
Would be when they would commence the operations.
Okay. Then we have to request approval from the city for the demolition?
That's, that's correct. So part, part of this, part of this agreement will be then authorizing our design team to start working on the demolition plans for the facility, and get that permit in with the city, and then the waiting period starts.
Any additional questions?
So when we start the master planning for the Sudan property, will that be before, after the approval from the city?
It's going to be concurrent. So while that year that we're waiting for the, the approval to do the demolition, it'll be when we're working on the master planning.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Is there any chance that the approval process could be less than a year?
Maybe, but right now, I think that the, so what the, the, you have, in order to get a demolition permit, it has to be signed off by the HBC. The HBC's, the HBC's process is the one-year process.
Yep.
So it's not...
They can require a plan.
As I'll tell you, technically, that's not a city requirement, that's an HBC requirement, technically.
Let's call it certificate of approval, this is what you apply for. And could it happen earlier? Yes. Is it likely it will happen? No.
No. Got it. But that's okay, because we're working on the master plan at the same time.
That's right.
And that's going to take some time, anyway.
Correct. Okay, additional questions, comments? All right, versus the desire?
A move that we approve this.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Smith to approve the project ordinance and the related budget amendment in the amount of $373,750, and authorize staff to execute all necessary agreements for the proposed work. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you, sir. All right, next item, item 13 is appointments. You have pending, current, and upcoming. Under pending, commissioners, you have there several. I've had two commissioners that have said something to me about, they have nominations. Vice Chair Booker, under pending.
Yes, I'd like to, to...
Right here.
Yeah, propose Chip Shagnon as the chair for the ABC board.
All right, we have the nomination for Mr. Chip Shagnon for the ABC board. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Hear none, he will be appointed and accepted by acclamation. All right, and then Commissioner Hunt, you had one here?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Theron McCabe, our former Craven County Commissioner, to the Fireman's Relief Fund Board.
All right, we have the nomination of Theron McCabe for District 5 Fireman's Relief Fund Board. I think this is for Harlow Fire Department.
Township 5.
Township 5, thank you. Any additional nominations from the floor? Hear none, he will be accepted by acclamation. All right, are there any additional nominations under pending? I did talk to, failed to talk to Commissioner Howard, I did talk to Commissioner Hunt, and they would like a little extra time on the Havelock Board of Adjustment, and trying to find somebody for there. But you do have in your agenda packets, list of eligible citizens who could serve. All right, hear no other pending, we go to current. The first one is the Craven County Clean Sweep. You have an applicant of Cynthia Tisdale, who seeks appointment. Do you have a nomination?
I nominate Ms. Tisdale.
Okay, we have a nomination of Ms. Tisdale. Are there additional nominations? Hear none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Next is the Emergency Medical Services for Havelock Fire and Rescue. You have there the retirement of an individual, you have an applicant of the, I reckon this is the new chief?
Yes. He's been, he's been in the seat for well over a year, so he's not brand new.
Okay. Mr. Dorn, so is that a nomination?
That's my nomination, I would nominate him.
We have the nomination of Mr. Tom Dorn. Are there additional nominations? Hear none, he will be accepted by acclamation. All right, next is the Craven County Planning Board. I would ask that we defer consideration of that another month, if you saw right, commissioners. Hear no objection, we would defer consideration. Okay? Next would be upcoming appointments, you see those. Are there any additional appointments that we did not take care of? All right, hear none, we will move to item 14, County Attorney's Report, Mr. Grady.
I report, Mr. Grady.
All right, thank you, sir. Item 15 is the petition of citizens for general topics. Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, we have one person who'd like to speak, that would be Linda Wansie. That's what it looks like, I'm not sure that's...
We apologize.
That's okay.
Maybe if you print it in the future, I can read it, but...
It's Wan Seagler, from Southern Indiana.
If you would, pull your mic down, just so they can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Linda Wan Seagler, and I live at 906 Dickinson Court, here in New Bern, North Carolina. And basically, all I wanted to do tonight was to say thank you to all of y'all, because I understand you have been accepting grant money from the American Rescue Plan that was signed by, you know, President Biden, and I just wanted to say thank you for the citizens of, of Craven County. I think it, a lot of this money will be putting to good use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for staying.
Sorry, I mispronounced your name.
I certainly have been. We try.
All right, the next item is County Manager's Report, Mr. White.
I'll ask you one thing, I won't be as long as Jeff Merritt, okay? When he said thank you earlier, Gene mumbled, thank you for your presentation being over, so, I don't know if y'all could hear him. I'm giving him away over there, right? Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity, I'll try to be brief tonight. It was a really, really busy two weeks, and I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder, because I know commissioners were active, too, but the county really had some great events. Just really good to be out in the community, getting things done, and seeing people working together, so that, that was really nice. I'm here tonight to talk about a subject, there's a gentleman here, David, if you would stand up for just a second, David Bone. Dave is the, I say new, he's been here over a year now, but Executive Director for East Carolina Council of Governments, and David and I have worked together when he was the county manager, and have worked closely together while he's been here in New Bern, working with council of government. In your packet, under the manager's report, David has sent me some things that they've been working on, their strategic priorities over the next few years, and they're really aligned well with what Craven County's doing. And David's focus, and I know Commissioner Jones will appreciate this, has been to help our smaller municipalities. Our smaller municipalities got art money, as our citizen mentioned, and for groups that have one or two employees, that's very difficult to manage. We have a huge finance department, I said that, Craig, down there, and they do a great job. Not huge, just big, right? But anyway, we got a lot of resources there that they don't have, and David and his team, and he's brought in some fantastic finance folks, have really assisted these smaller municipalities with getting that done. Along with issues, and if you haven't read the news, lots of jurisdictions are having a hard time getting an audit done right now, right? Particularly the small groups, you got to put a lot of information together, and then find an auditor that they're willing to do it. And David's groups try to assist anywhere they can. But along with that, focus on economic development, focus on infrastructure, focus on regionalism, bringing counties together, how can we do things more efficiently together at a lower cost to our taxpayers? And recently, I believe, also, there's an email David sent me back in June, that went over their work over the last year, and you can see, he's been quite busy, he's hit the ground running, doing everything from looking for town managers in Carteret County, working on the grocery assistance program, Commissioner Smith, that you, you dealt with on the aging board, the 160D stuff, still coming on with the planning ordinance, as he helped the town of Vanceboro with that, and a variety of other things, including master plans, Part F grant applications, helped with an agricultural study we did here at the, the county level. David and I have talked, and I know several years ago, this board made a decision not to participate in the board there, and to not pay the $500 membership fee for the county. There was a lot of turmoil at that time, it was unanimous by this board to make that decision, supported by staff. I believe times have changed, and I have a lot of confidence in David and his team, and I would like to bring before you tonight, the proposal to rejoin the council, and, and do a budget amendment for $500 to make that work.
All right, discussion from the board.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to join the East Carolina Council of Government, and to procreate $500 in the general fund.
Craig, do you think you have the flexibility, or do we need a budget amendment? I spoke a little too soon there.
If they approve it, I'll agree with them, and the chair will...
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, you heard the motion, you heard the second, discussion on the motion.
I would just like to say that I think approving this is a good move, because I truly believe what's good for our municipalities is good for the county as a whole, and I want to work as a team in, in unison towards the same goals. I think this is a good, a good Board to join, a good organization.
Other, other discussion? I would also say to you, Mr. Bone, just on, thank you as a Commissioner from Rural Park, County Manager has already said it, but your assistance to Town of Dover, Town of Cove City, I've heard from them both. East Carolina Council of Government's been there for them, and, and they need that assistance, so I echo that, and I'll just tell you thank you. All right, you have a motion, you have a second. Here are no further discussion, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, the, the second action would be that as part of the membership, a Commissioner needs to fill a seat that Craven County would receive on the East Carolina Council of Government. I know we had discussed, they do meet at night, which is convenient for Commissioner Howard. Most of the meetings the Commissioners are during the day or early afternoon, which is difficult for him. So I, I know he had shown some interest in that, I don't know if he wants to speak to that, or the Board may...
Are you willing to serve?
I'll just, yeah, I'm willing to serve, and I'd like to thank, I've heard Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Mitchell recommend me, so thank you for your vote of confidence.
All right, well, I'll nominate Commissioner Howard for the position, are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we will follow the same process as we always do for appointments, we will set by acclamation.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time, and I have him here, if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for the County Manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners' Reports, if you'd like to start us out this evening.
I don't even have a report, really, I'm just going to say thank you for your confidence, Commissioner, Chairman, and Commissioner Mitchell, for joining the ECC, and also kudos to my seven-year-old daughter who's set through this meeting, many adults could not. I feel like we're building character, so, thanks, Eve.
That's good. Our Junior Commissioners, what we call...
That's right.
Thank you, Commissioner Howard, Commissioner Mitchell?
Nothing to report.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I have something tonight, sorry. First of all, I would like to share with you, many of you may have gotten this, a thank you note from Ms. Simmons, did you get that? Yes. I wanted to let her know that we, you'd get that, and we're aware. Also, I had some, I think, very happy moments last week. First of all, we, I went to the groundbreaking, as did Mr. White, Mr. Booker, and several other county members, the groundbreaking for the Stanley White Community Organization, the Stanley White Center, and that was very nice, and I was excited about that, it turned out very well. And also, my most exciting moment was, it had to do with summer clean sweep. We had picking up paper in the communities, there were several communities that had folk picking up paper, and my community, Pembroke, was one of them, and I expected, you know, with, with hot weather, five or six people, maybe 10, but to my amazement, about 20, maybe 30 people showed up. This was a religious organization, they had mostly men, but they had women and children that volunteered to come to Pembroke to clean up our area. It was so, I mean, amazing, I was almost brought to tears, and I want them to know the, how much I appreciate it, and I want our other communities to know, that we, none of them are forgotten, we're looking at cleaning up our communities, and we thank these people who are interested and willing to come out and serve. I think that that is one way that we can show our faith and our belief in helping other people. So I thank you so many times, and in the name of the organization is fitness, fellowship, and faith, and I thank them greatly.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Hunt?
Yes, talking about different organizations we belong to, I attended the NACO meeting in Texas a couple of weeks ago, I did bring back some new ideas that was shared with me from Commissioners from across the country, there was over 3,500 Commissioners in attendance. One of the other important things that I found about being on that Board in particular is sometimes it's not always about going in front of our federal legislation, telling them what we want or what we need, but I really believe it's important for us to be on these different committees, and steering committees in particular, to say what we don't want, or what we don't need. Sometimes it's important to have someone stand up and say, stop. So I, I hope we continue with that group. I also attended the Craven County Clean Sweep Saturday morning, there was three of us that went out there. Great news is that when I've done that area before, in the southernmost part of Craven County, we had picked up 42 bags and a tray, 42 bags of garbage, plus a trailer full of mattresses, tires, car parts, and other things that wouldn't fit in a bag. When we did it Saturday, now we didn't cover the entire 11 miles, but when we did it Saturday, we had seven bags. So, great improvement, still potential for a little bit more improvement, but it's already made a difference, and I, I'm, I, like you, was super excited, and it makes me feel good. That afternoon, I attended the Craven and Pamlico Animal Shelter Open House, a fantastic event, with, I love our new director, she's moving and grooving. We had 19 adoptions on Saturday alone, more are pending, more are in work, so I wanted to let everyone know that. The best part of my afternoon, Saturday afternoon, was seeing empty kennels, both in the cat house and on the dog side, and that made my heart happy, because I've been involved with animal rescue for a long time, and you don't always see that in animal shelters. So I want to commend the staff at Craven Pamlico Animal Shelter, and thank all the vendors, to include Colonial Capital Humane Society and the other organizations that came out to support Craven Cano, Craven County animals, and there are animals, and everybody's stepping up, and it's, it's a good movement. Lastly, I want to let everyone know that Harlow Volunteer Fire Department is holding, hosting an open house this coming Saturday. It's going to be on Ferry Branch Road, it's known as Highway, it's known as Ferry Branch, but it's Highway 306. They're going to have five food trucks, so you can come out and have lunch, you can meet our volunteer firefighters, we're celebrating a 51-year anniversary that that organization has been in existence, and we're going to have three of our original members there to attend, so we can thank them for starting that. We're also going to have various representation from Craven County to let all the residents know what services are available to them. So if you can come out this coming Saturday from 10 to 2, it would be glad to see everyone. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, just a quick comment, the Baptist on Mission Men and Women continue to do a great job in our county. This past week, there were volunteers here from Virginia and from Pennsylvania, two groups. The group from Virginia was mostly youth, they did cleanup, they did work on a deck, they did a variety of things. These, this group, they're, they've torn recently several more buildings down in James City. I know they've done a number of projects in Ms. Smith's district, and so, again, I commend them, and hopefully we can keep them here. That's our, that's our concern, and our, they're, the parent organization at any time could say, hey, we're pulling out, we're going elsewhere. So, it's a, it's a great organization, they've done an amazing amount of work here in the last five years.
I forgot that, I'm not going to restate what you're saying, but I give kudos to them as well for the work they've done in our community.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I have nothing to bring before the Board, any other business that we've left out, County Manager?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good? All right, here are nothing further, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.